That's part of the hesitancy, if you will. But it's also the opportunity for us to get our opinions out there before the road is designed. It's an opportunity for us to be proactive rather than reactive. And in being proactive, one of the first things we need to know from a staff standpoint, is we need to know what type of zoning and uses would be appropriate out there. Looking at some similar communities that have similar situations, I've found some zoning regulations out there that I think would be very appropriate and worth further investigation. These concepts would then, if we have a general concept of a zoning that we would like to see, we can begin to develop that. We are working with the consultant right now who's doing the UDO or zoning code complete rewrite. We can incorporate that into that. But the concept then, if we choose to go with a master developer, we can hand that off to the master developer saying, here's the basic concept of the zoning we're looking at. So the zoning is crucially, vitally important to whatever we're doing. Some of the things in some of the other communities that have similar situations, density and height are obviously going to be the key selling points. The one community that has almost an exact situation to this is Hoffman Estates. And Hoffman Estates utilizes a zoning code which restricts the uses to mainly office and entertainment and hospitality uses. And then in the height category goes, the district is basically 45 feet in height except for when the district is created. If the council believes that there are certain areas that are more appropriate for higher zoning, that the council can then institute zoning of up to 210 feet on those properties. We can construct buildings in this area of up to 15 stories without any problems with the FAA or anything along that line of having to get approval with the airport. So again, 210 feet may be a little bit inappropriate, but it's an example of the types of zoning that are out there that we can work with. Other zonings that I've looked at and are working based, the height of the building on the size of the parcel, the bigger the parcel, the higher the building you can go by zoning, right? Again, the type of zoning I think that would be appropriate here is zoning which tells the developer right off the bat, this is what the city wants, this is what's acceptable to us, there won't be lengthy zoning and plan commission hearings for you. If you build according to these guidelines which we have laid on the table for you, we wish to welcome you to the community. That's a huge incentive to a developer in that they know that if they come in with a plan that meets the guidelines of the city, the zoning and master developer really kind of work together. If they know that the master developer has laid out a plan that's acceptable to the city and they come in with a building that is acceptable to the zoning which the city has laid out, and they know that they can get approval of that building in a reasonably short period of time, that is a huge incentive to them because they don't have to tie up a lot of money into development costs. So that's something we really need direction on is what type of uses and zoning is appropriate for this corridor. Another thing that we really need to know, as I mentioned incentives, we'd need to know what types of incentives the city is willing to offer to developers in this area. In your packet, I've put in three types of scenarios that might be appropriate for this area, and I'm not asking for a decision on them tonight, obviously, but these are things that we must keep in mind as we continue discussions regarding this corridor and be prepared to answer the questions when developers come in and say, I wish to look at, you know, what can the city offer us to do a development in here? The three concepts that you need to look, that we're going to be discussing or that are in the packet are the business development district. Business development district is kind of like a TIF district in that you establish an area, you hold some public hearings regarding it. Where it's different from a TIF is, and it's for an extended period of time and you can use the increased tax revenues from this area to do public infrastructure improvements and land acquisition costs and everything along that nature. Where it differs from a TIF is the only taxes that can be utilized in this are the taxes which the city can claim. So the school districts are not involved in a business development district. The fire district is not involved in a business development district. Only the city and our increment that goes along with that property tax would be the only dollars that we could offer a developer. One other aspect that a business development district lets us do is actually it does allow us to increase the sales tax in just that district. So that one, an additional 1%, up to an additional 1%. That additional 1% sales tax in that specific district could be utilized again to do improvements in the district. It would not be applicable to the entire city, it would only be applicable to that district. Another aspect that we should examine in this area is a special service area. You're all familiar with special service areas as they pertain to like detention basins and everything along that. This special service area would be to impose a property tax on the specific parcels up there to help pay for infrastructure improvements that are there. This could be very beneficial if there were road improvements that were necessary for the city to accomplish, to go in conjunction with IDOT, with their plans, if there needed to be an extra frontage road or an access road constructed. The special service area would allow us to pay for those. The other, the third area that we should discuss is possibly up there is a TIF district, a full-blown TIF district. Because again, we're not going to be, as far as the other taxing bodies, it's something we should probably discuss with them to see if they would be willing to negotiate or willing to enter into agreements regarding this because we're not talking about an area where we're anticipating adding any residential at this point, at least in my view. That could change what the direction the council gives us. But if we're not adding residential to this area and the area is already built out, the negative effects to the other taxing bodies of a TIF are reduced. So it's something that we should explore. I'm not saying it has to be done, but it's something we should definitely explore. That kind of brings us to, once we know that, what incentives are available to developers, what type of zoning is available to the developers. As Alderman Lewitin alluded to, that we are going to be attending an international conference on economic development in May. And at that conference, if we have some basic guidelines and directions from the city, it opens up the opportunities for us to talk to developers and say, here's what the city is contemplating, is this interesting to you? Getting their feedback will also allow us to further define these plans and recommendations to the council and hopefully assist us in our economic development efforts. It also allows the developers to get in on the ground level and work with us and kind of both of us working towards a common goal. So that is an important aspect to everything that we're going to be discussing. And finally, we've mentioned it, the master developer concept. The master development concept can be vitally important to not only our economic development efforts, but it can be vitally important to the Illinois Department of Transportation decisions that are going to be made over the next few years, or the next year, really. If we have a fully developed plan of what we anticipate and what we hope to accomplish and gain out of this Elgin-O'Hare Western Access, it could quite possibly influence where the final decision as to where interchanges are located or frontage roads are placed. So it is a very important thing for us to do. If we sit back and wait on the sidelines, we're going to get what everybody tells us we're going to get. If we're proactive in it, it takes us to the table and we can hopefully influence the decision process a little bit and get the best for Wood Dale. So very briefly, or very quickly, that was a synopsis of my memo and the information we're asking you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point, I would ask anybody in the council if they have advice to give to Ross in regards specifically to what he can say and do at the conference. Yes?
Are you looking for some okay to look for a guy that's a master planner? Or are you just thinking about it right now?
In that respect, we have been contacted by one firm already who wishes to do this exact plan for us. I guess we're just looking for direction from the council. Is a master developer concept something that the council is interested in pursuing? If so, we'll continue along the routes that we've been doing of either working with the developer who has already commented, or we will seek input from other developers.
Do you know what his cost is?
No, we don't.
You don't know?
I can take a guess.
I think probably be what, 100 grand?
150, probably, a little higher.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Chuck. Mayor Johnson?
Rather than just throwing this out here at us, we have three experts out there. What's your recommendation and tell me why it's your recommendation?
I would definitely say that we should consider the concept of a master developer. I think it will speed our process along. It will take and accelerate the pace of our potential development. It will clarify to everyone, not only to the council, to the citizens, to developers, to IDOT themselves, it will clarify the city of Wood Dale position to everyone that this is what we desire and want to do in this area. Working in conjunction with a master developer, I would say that staff would definitely advise and make recommendations regarding the zoning for this area. Again, looking at the research I've already done of similar communities and with similar situations, I believe that there's some very good zoning out there and the fact that we already have a consultant on board for that, we can get some very quick recommendations to the council regarding zoning for this area.
Mayor, good answer. John?
Two questions for you. Briefly, can you tell me how a master developer is different than a planner?
They're kind of interchangeable, if you will. A master developer, though, what it would be is the planner's going to, they have a planner in their team usually. The planner will lay out a concept, a design scenario. They'll also bring in traffic engineers, they'll bring in landscape architects if necessary, and they'll lay out a plan that they believe will present the best image for Wood Dale or what Wood Dale wishes to be their image presented. That plan then would be brought before the council for an approval. Where a planner's, just a straight planning report would be is, here's what you could potentially do. A master developer is going to be bringing in a plan that says, this can be done. Give us an approval to do it and we're going to go out and start shopping for developers.
So the developer gets more touchy-feely, so to speak, with the land itself after the paper starts to dry? Okay, and I think you already hit on my second question, which would have been, you know, what kind of, what could we expect from a master developer with relation to, you know, the traffic engineering itself? I mean, one, you know, two big parts to this. You know, how do we want to use the land and we got to fight for accessibility for it? And they can completely manage that accessibility part, or would we still potentially be looking for additional dollars spent elsewhere with an engineering firm that only lays out roads?
Yeah. Right. If we, you know, again, based on the direction the council wishes to give them, if we say we want traffic solutions as part of this, actual traffic engineered solutions, and they'll include that in their plans and development. So in essence, it's a one-stop shop for everything. If the council desires to have traffic improvements in this area, the master developer will take that into consideration. If the council desires to have high-density hotel development or big-box retail development, they'll take that into consideration in their development scenarios and lay out the traffic and parking and everything accordingly.
Thank you, Alderman Caddala. Alderman Shaki, you are next.
Yes, you've been meeting with ITASKA, some of the staff has, if I'm not mistaken, cooperating with plans. Wouldn't this be a good one? I mean, we'd have the area from Route 83 all the way to at least 55 or 53 to work on rather than competing with ITASKA to have the same master planner or come up with somebody that we can both agree on and share the cost on and maybe benefit by it as well as ITASKA benefit.
I agree that that might be a good goal to try and do, but however, I believe under our current structure and everything along that nature, we want to make sure what's best for Wood Dale, they want to make sure what's best for ITASKA. The scenario that you're talking about would be essentially the two communities getting together and establishing what would be called a community development corporation, where it's an independent agency that works on behalf of both communities. Based on the timeline and everything that we're looking to make these decisions in, because of the IDOT timeline, I don't know if that could be, if that's possible or feasible at this point. I know it sounds a little harsh to say, we need to take care of ours and they need to take care of theirs, but we do need to make sure that we're getting the best for Wood Dale and they need to be making sure that they're getting the best for ITASKA at this point.
Thank you, Alderman Shaki. I see Mike has a question. Would you go to the podium, please? Or maybe it's a statement?
This is a really a question.
Just don't bowl us over.
I'm kind of, one, so far I've been asked for a question, two, but I couldn't confirm the second one, the planning strategy that IDOT has. My people have a CTE, I'm not a state, it's very important to cover there. But I will say, I'm not sure if you need a master planner or if you don't, but you certainly need a better team of representation at those meetings, because that's where they're deciding where in the long-term, the exit path for that home to me. When I attended a committee area, they put me. There were two people there for ITASKA, there was Mike Malone there from Wood Dale, and that certainly doesn't represent you strongly enough to get your opinions and your economic goals put forward. I don't know how it was in the other rooms, because they divided us into five sections at that point, and maybe some of the other people who were in attendance can tell you, but you may have a good idea here at some point that you need a better strategy for attending those area conferences and getting your representation out there. I don't know, 150,000 sounds like a lot of money, but this is a big project, a big area project. There's probably 20 different communities fighting for what they think is vital for their community. And if you're not represented, they'll, you're not going to get your interests taken care of, so it's all.
Mike Malone, thank you for your comments, they're appreciated. Alderman Police, you are next.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Russ, but I heard ITASKA already has like three or four different scenarios for that Thorndale corridor, which they've developed with their own, let's say, landowners over there on Thorndale, correct?
I haven't seen it, but again, I've heard, I've heard that comment also.
Okay. Second, like Mr. Malone just said, I was at the last Elgin-O'Hare meeting. Again, this is one of the reasons why this was put on this agenda for this committee. I was standing there. ITASKA had two people there, they had their ideas, their plans, what they wanted. Even Bensonville, when asked, and who's against the airport expansion, he had ideas. And the only thing that I could say is, can we have an interchange at Wood Dale and Thorndale? That's terrible. We need to step up to the plate, otherwise they're just going to drive right past us.
Alderman Wesley, do you wish to ask any questions?
So is the discussion now, is this the option that's going to be on the floor now? Do we hire a master plan? Or are we going to address the other concerns that you brought up? What we want up there, I mean, there's a lot of issues that were brought up here tonight. And I guess they need direction. When are you going in May, may I ask?
When are we going in May?
Yeah.
May 17th.
May 17th. So more or less, this council needs to make a decision when these people go out to get the businesses, and we need to discuss it tonight and, you know, give them directions, how are we going to get these people here? I mean, May 17th, that's next month, guys. So, I mean, I don't know what areas you want to hit first on this. I think we're just concentrating on one, I think we need to answer every question that was addressed tonight, one way or another.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Alderman calls, you wanted to speak again.
Yeah. Would this master planner help you guys in May when you go out to, by having one?
The master planner, at this point, if we were to begin working, to be quite honest, we probably wouldn't even have the master planner on board by May. But...
But you could say...
The fact that we're working with a master planner tells a lot.
With a name, a name of an outfit that...
Even if we don't have the name, just the fact that if we could tell people that we are in the process of acquiring the services of a master developer, I believe that would carry some weight with some of these developers. Because again, to them, that's an indication that their review process will be streamlined.
Then we should do something tonight.
Russ, what city is the meeting in?
It is in Las Vegas.
That's the one we authorized about four or five months ago for you to go to?
Yes, sir.
The two of you are going, right?
Correct.
Mayor, everybody's had a turn at the podium, and at this point, I'd like to really ask for your direction on what motion, if any, should be made? Or should we, or do we not make a motion at this point?
I think we should follow staff's recommendation. Those are the three experts we're paying their paychecks on, and we think we should listen to what they said. Let me just comment on a couple of things. ITASKA already has handled, hired their consultant or master developer, and to my knowledge, that budget was 160,000, and they're already like six months into it. And their master developer or representative has been attending these corridor planning groups. So that part, they've already done. The other questions, as to Alderman Wesley, I think the incentives will come after we consult with our master developer and we create a concept plan, and the same thing for the preferred uses of the corridor. I think the master developer will assist us in that whole process. I think the decision you have tonight is direct staff to go out and hire a, or seek a proposal from a master developer with costs not to exceed 150,000 dollars.
Well, we can go out for an RFQ to master developers and then, you know, we'll take the process back to you. But let's not forget, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here. The main focus of this is not to have this ready by May, the main focus of this is to have this ready for when this road comes in. So I think that we need to concentrate on that first.
I would, if I may, respectfully disagree with Jeff on the one point. I think one of the functions of the master developer is to assist IDOT and us in the development of this plan, and do we have the intersection of Wood Dale Road or not? And what kind of development are we seeking there? So I think the master developer needs to participate in that project as well, that process as well, and be Wood Dale's spokesman along with the elected officials and along with staff.
I'm going to follow your advice, Mayor, and ask the council to approve a motion to allow staff to seek out proposals from master developers and that they should have up to, let's say 160, let's make us as good as ITASKA. And ask them to negotiate the best price, not the maximum, but give them wiggle room. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Nope, question.
I'm sorry? Please, what is your question?
Are we going out for RFQ or are we going the other one? I get those confused.
Would you just explain the difference to Alderman Wesley?
Well, I know the difference.
Are the RFQ...
Well, I think first off, we should amend the motion not to include a monetary value first, because we're just going out for an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications from a firm, similar to, you know, what we did for our original TIF study. And then once we select a desired firm, that's when we go for a proposal with that firm and work on monetary value.
Okay, and you have any idea how many there may be available going out?
How many firms we're going to send out to?
Yeah.
In the neighborhood of five to 10.
Mayor, what was your proposal, RFQ or a proposal?
Actually, I was recommending the RFP. RFQ process will interview more firms, but that will delay us, our active involvement in a very critical stage that we're in right now.
Would you repeat those three initials?
RFP is request for proposal from a specific firm.
Of what?
From one firm. RFQ is a request from multiple firms to submit their qualifications. We then pick that firm, then we negotiate a proposal with them after the fact.
So the, because I was attempting to parrot your statement, so the request was for an RFP?
Yes, of staff's choice.
You wanted amended to staff's choice for RFP or RFQ?
No, no, I'm not. I'm suggesting the council approve, staff negotiating, subject to final council approval, and RFP from an accredited firm of staff's choice.
I amend my statement to parrot what the mayor just said. Alderman Caddala.
Mr. Mayor, you just said an RFP only means that we're going to one firm. It's always been my understanding that an RFP can, should typically mean more than one. And if we don't have any firm already qualified, on a qualified list of consultants to be able to pull us off, don't we need an RFQ to multiple firms first? Followed then by review of the RFQ, approval of a number of firms, then an RFP to, once again, a number of firms, and not just to one. That's my business, that's standard business practice, that's the business of construction. This is similar, but if I'm incorrect, I will definitely stand corrected.
Thank you, Alderman Caddala. Mayor, would you respond to his statement, which is a direct statement to you as a question?
My understanding, and I'll stand corrected by Mr. Murris, but look, my understanding is RF, you know there is no requirement we go out for RFQs, for professional services. You can go directly with an RFP, but I do stand corrected, we could solicit multiple RFPs from several notable firms in the Chicagoland area or Nationwide area, and then the council could choose directly a firm. The RFQ adds the extra step in there.
So it's amended that council will ask staff to go out and look at multiple RFPs and to come back to council with one or more that they recommend?
Before I second, I was a second or so, before I second, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
With the RFP, number one, I don't feel comfortable with just one. I agree with Alderman Caddala, we should have three or four guys, at least four. You're saying five to 10. Four reputable companies. I know Addison has one, I believe ITASKA was using, same one Addison was. We should be able to pick four or five companies and get them to put a proposal in. Is that right? Can we, if we do RFP, is it one? Or can we get four?
Wait a second, Alderman Nunzio, first, we did, the proposal is one or more, and even though I said one or more, I know staff, they're not going to come back with just one. Second, anybody who's doing the same thing for another city would have to be a no-go because of the conflict of interest. If Addison, Bensonville, and ITASKA have hired somebody, we can't hire the same person because then we'd be going in the direction of a corporation, a community development corporation. And we're more in a ballgame than we are in a rally. And even though I know your proposal sounds like you'd like to make a dog sled team out of a bunch of loose dogs, I think that we're more in the latter stage. So it may not be possible to get 10 people, 10 organizations, or five, because we would have to automatically eliminate those who know the strategies of other cities and are already under their pay. They would be like a fifth column coming into Wood Dale. So the politics of it has to be taken into consideration as well as the ability of the people. So I think we can safely leave it to staff not to flub-a-dub on the case if we say to get one or more.
One will never work for me.
All right, two or more, we'll just say two or more.
I'll turn it down flat out. Unless you guys come with three, at least three, one will never work.
Mayor, is three a good number?
Absolutely, and I think Mr. Murris was seeking recognition.